All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started and call the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five Greenham City Council meeting to order. At this time being it, being Veterans Day, I know that we have one council member, I don't think I've let anybody out. Mr. Phil Dowdy, thank you for your service, we want to recognize that. Is there anybody else in the audience that's a veteran? Gary, we want to recognize you, Dustin Burge, anybody else. Again, being Veterans Day, thank you all very much. We're going to jump down Dustin is on the, yeah, uh, go ahead and skip the road call, so let's get that on the record, I'm sorry.
Mark Harris, State White, John Norman, Bruce Mann, Phil Dowdy, Jamie Gillan.
Dustin has another meeting that he has to be at. He's wanting to speak with you guys about Operation Holiday Heroes, which used to be called Shop With The Cops. Floor's yours Dustin.
Uh, thank you Mayor Meadows, thank you council. Um, yeah, actually, my council meeting's going on simultaneously, but this is how important I feel about this event we do every year. For years, you guys heard it called Shop With The Cops, called everything else, and we all decided to come together. The Northern Order Police, County Ambulance Authority, uh, the Grand Fire Fire Association, the cities, everyone decided to come under one umbrella, with all three school districts, all three family resource centers there, and also with DCBS here in Greenham. Uh, because there's a huge need, you know, there's still a huge need. Um, it's something I'm proud of, it's something that I wanted to share with you all. I'm thankful of Mayor Meadows providing me here to talk about this, because unfortunately, we have the same time council meetings, so I don't need to visit you guys. But we do have a wonderful relationship between our two cities. I've worked with some of you, I've been great with your police and fire departments, and we, this is something that we hope you guys can help us help these kids. Right now, we have over four hundred and fifty kids signed up across Greenham County. Uh, we hope every year to give them up to a hundred and fifty dollars tax-free, uh, on the night we take them. To be honest with you, it might not be a hundred and fifty, you'll wonder how much we raise, because the demand is so high. It might be a hundred, a hundred point five, but we, we'll make sure these kids did something. We'll make sure these kids have a Christmas, its families, this. And if any of you have never been part of this, I'm inviting you to it tonight. It's on December eighth, um, Raisin Middle School is where we'll start the dinner portion of the thing. We've always done a county-wide community dinner for those in need. Again, our police and fire departments are a huge help with this. It's a hundred percent cooked there, we start cooking in our community center, three days per hour. Uh, we will do deliveries if there's people coming out, say they don't have vehicles, say they're disabled, they're ill. We'll take, we'll be at our fire department, our police department, speed deliveries that night. But that all starts at five thirty. And at six o'clock is when it gets real wild. Mayor Meadows been there with him for, uh, that's where we go up to the garden center and the Ashland Mall. And that's where we start pairing you guys off with kids, if you've never done this, this is one of the, to me, I tell everybody it's the most important thing to do all year here in Greenham County. I say that, I hope we're in a, forget everything else, forget how the year goes, let's end on a great note with helping these families. If you've got kids out there that haven't been shopping before, you've got families out there that this and all those kids are gonna do. And us creating an environment where it's not a handout, it's not anything like that, it's a fun experience. The den is a big party, they're Santa, there's sometimes the Grinch, sometimes there's some hooch, some hooch bills, I can get some people to dress up. If they want to dress up, is that anything you wanna dress up? Okay. Uh, I invite you all, I hope you all come, and if you know anybody who wants to sponsor, please. The FOP has a Venmo out right now. If, if, if it's a company that needs W nine, they can send you access to your Raisin, Operation Holiday Heroes, we need a W nine. Every little bit helps. Uh, thank you all for letting us put one of the boxes in here, you wouldn't believe how much we get, people can start on those channels, those boxes, you know, maybe a few hundred bucks, that's another kid. So that was it, that's my floor, uh, me coming out here, talking to you all, very passionate about this, I love this band. I hope to see someone there, I hope you all feel like it's your favorite band too, because these are your kids, these are the kids who are all interested in this.
That four fifty covers the whole county, correct?
Yes, and it's probably gonna be about five hundred.
I just make sure it's covered.
Yes, all through, and if you know anybody who's signing up, the way we're doing that, to be fair, is if there are students in the school district that their family resource office, if you don't, are not currently in the school district, go to your DCBS and they'll sign you up.
What's the age difference?
It's zero to nineteen, nineteen, I mean, it's whole school age, I mean, we took teen.
You know, school, school age or something?
Uh, we've offered, uh, we've offered to, we also do separate, you know, there's some people that can't go with a big crowd, we will do a separate thing. Uh, as they sign up, they can put those special requests in. Uh, and some, you know, it's, it's something maybe they don't want to broadcast, we, we take that consideration. And if anybody's interested more about the group that's putting this on, we have a meeting next Tuesday, uh, down here at the DCBS office at ten o'clock. If you'd mind looking to stop by, uh, we have the same resource officers involved, we have social resources officers involved, the cities involved, like us. Uh, we just gotta see how we're all coming together.
So where we get, do you collect the money, is it a gift to the buyer, or a gift to the place officer?
Give it to whoever, and then find those to us, or the FOP, and then we install money together.
Yeah, I don't know whether there's a drop point or what's.
Yeah, we, you can treat us as a drop point, or the FOP. Uh, if anybody, they can give it to us, uh, like I said, if somebody needs a W nine, we can make that up for them. It will be ours.
Is your city giving like a certain amount?
Yes, my city always gives up to five thousand. Now, I'll be honest with you, uh, it, it comes with me, uh, this year probably will be that. Uh, I'm not telling you all to do that, I can give you examples of what other cities gave, like Portland gave five hundred, other cities a thousand. Uh, yes, some of the cities are giving a hundred percent. Now, I've never had to go out, I'll be honest with you, this is the first year we ran county-wide. We were always taking kids from the other schools, but we never truly broadcasted it as a whole county, other one umbrella to this year. My highest numbers, what do I get in two twenty, I'm, now I'm at almost five hundred.
Could this be something I fell under, under Torres? Probably not under Torres, we'd probably have to come out of your general fund, uh, either Parks and Recreation, or something like that, if we chose the.
We've got that city of beautification fund, that fifty.
Well, that's more or less up to beautification fund, if they wanted to do that.
I think, it's a split, it's not just a beautification split, like the city.
What we do is, we just control the money for them, we just manage the money, that's all we do, so if she needs checks for it, she just comes away.
I don't think Dave knows that we, that the city manages beautification, like light on sales. I think he's talking about the online for city and beautification of the.
That's right. You could use something like that, I mean, there's various different places you can bring the money. But one thing, you know, and this didn't happen to me last year, but a sad story is, is one of the gentlemen up there last year that I got to witness was, is he had a eight-year-old employee with him, and I had mine, my child was me, and we were over picking out toys. Well, we got done picking out toys, and I ran into him, they were over the clothing section. And I was like, you know, what's going on? So we got to talk a little bit, you know, not with the kids around us, and all he gets was one of those coats, some clothes, shoes. And he cared about the toys. So this is how great of a need there is, uh, and it goes for a great cause. Raisin's been doing this for several years, Shop With The Cops has been going on for several years, and now we've brought this, Dustin's leadership, Tony Wilson's at Raisin, and the FOP, and we've all just decided to go together, make a county-wide, all, all the school districts, and DCBS, so. I personally think we should give them out, uh, whatever incentives they give, but. We could, you know, good outreach, and that's for good reason.
Well, one that we normally do, is Shop With The Cops, so, and this is off the line now, I mean, so what did we?
We know what we're, did with the Shop With The Cops, we just, just play with the, the FOP is a Shop With The Cops. I don't recall, but I want to think somewhere around twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. So, and then, we also have people that can stop in and write checks, uh, to the city for Shop With The Cops. Certain businesses have been doing that, out here, and there still might be some, uh, I don't know, but I know of.
Well, I know that we never lied, like that, and that budget, but we've had to earn that, come on the year.
We can make it work. We have a motion on the floor for a donation of twenty-five hundred dollars to Operation Holiday Heroes. We have a second. Is there any more discussion? Broke.
Bruce Manns?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy? Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave White?
Dustin, I'll get that check up to you probably before the end of the.
I'll, I'll just mail it. We thank Richard Harrison for donating, wanting to sit here, thank you, Harrison and his band, and I thank you all.
Can you say good day to those next to you?
Uh, that DCBS, thank you, I apologize. So, 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 I'm sorry. I think you know my clerk, I think you know where to get the check. Thank you, Mayor.
That's all right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Well, I'll get to my, I'll make you some.
Thank you all. Drive safely, watch for deer. So now we'll go to item number two, and that's to, uh, approve the minutes from the special meeting on October thirteenth, and a special meeting on November thirteenth. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? A second, is there any discussion? Broke.
John Norman? Bruce Manns?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy? Jamie Gillan?
Uh, there is a, on the October thirteenth meeting, there is to be a correction. This is John Gillan, and it's John, it's John Norman.
Okay.
So it was on the, uh, the motion, not Phil Dowdy, probably. But, uh, I.
Is there any more?
Um, Mark Harris?
Yes.
Uh, Dave White? You already said it, yes.
All right, I'll go over my report, uh, you guys have got it in front of you. Uh, total, total work orders completed, uh, one hundred and fifty-four, water leak repairs serviced, seven service leaks, two main leaks, water taps, five installed, water loose, water loss creeped back up a little bit, uh, twenty-two percent. A lot of that's in, uh, flushing, we are doing our winter flushing right now, our fall flushing right now, it's why the guys were here, uh, while you all were coming in, then coming back in. We completed, uh, approximately sixty-seven of the leak with bill cutoffs. We performed leak protection off Argyle, Cherokee, North Fork tanks. Now we're gonna move to the FEMA disasters. FEMA disaster forty-eight, forty-eight is in final closure. FEMA disaster forty-eight, sixty is still open, one project, not obligated. Um, but in that stages of approval, Laurel Street, we've been obligated thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for that. Fifth Street Bridge, that has been closed, we have been obligated two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Also, for the water line by Fifth Street Bridge, we have been obligated sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. For the embankment and repairs on Fifth Street Bridge, we have been obligated fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The Second Street tile replacement, uh, with the bridge is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, we're still waiting approval on that. FEMA disaster forty-eight, sixty-four is still open, several projects obligated already. Duck Puddle Road, exposed main line, obligated forty-eight, sixty. Smith Branch Road, obligated forty-eight, sixty. Collins Lane, Route One, exposed main, we've been obligated five thousand, one hundred and ninety. North Fork Road, exposed service, four thousand, three hundred and eighty, obligated. Sandsuck Road, exposed main, five thousand, two hundred and sixty, obligated. The water plant, raw water line intake emergency, uh, the insurance has kicked in a check for one thou, one hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty. FEMA has obligated to this point fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents for temporary emergency repairs. We're waiting on approval on a hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy and ten cents for FEMA for the water plant raw intake emergency. Awaiting approval for Seaton Avenue, ten inch water main exposed, uh, to be, being removed, bored, recovered up. Most of the time, with, when we talk to the KYE people, that more or less are our representatives with FEMA, they always say that FEMA usually chooses the section, uh, the second option. That section, second option is a hundred and seven thousand, thirteen dollars, we're still waiting on that. So, right now, we are obligated three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and eighteen, nine. Uh, KYE funds on hold, a hundred and seventeen thousand, insurance is paid, a hundred and fourteen thousand, one fifty. The, uh, pending approval projects with FEMA is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seven cents. Our projected total through all this is eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, joining partners back in February timeframe with EJP on parts is estimated savings of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. The average water loss savings for the last eight months have been eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. We were awarded, just recently, a state fire commission grant for a thermal imaging grant camera, for three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We were also awarded the fire equipment grant for two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Savings on chemicals since, uh, the last year has been fifty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and sixteen cents. That's a total of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy and sixteen cents. Police calls last month were three hundred and sixty-nine, fire calls were twelve. As far as the emergency declaration at the water plant, we are seventy percent complete with that. Uh, we're still waiting on some parts, and some more fittings and things of that nature to get that job completely done. The bad part about it is, is some stuff for the intake, we're about four and a half, or for the floating intake, we're about four and a half weeks out on that. So hopefully, we'll get some good weather whenever we get ready to switch that thing out. The newly formed Water Commission, wanted to let you guys know that I'm serving as the vice chair, Mayor Bobby Reynolds is the chair. And we have begun, uh, the switch from, uh, fall to winter for decorations. Excuse me, the veteran banners will be coming down, and stored probably over the weekend, as well as the Christmas lights will be going up. Uh, Richard and I, and probably someone else, I said Roger on this, but Roger's got a doctor's appointment. We will be in Frankfurt with Sarah from Cornerstone all day tomorrow, we have meetings. Uh, the data logger for the water plant went down, uh, we went ahead and was proactive in it, and self-reported to the DOW, our inspector. The new one should be here on Thursday. Tourism Board had purchased twenty-five decorative Christmas trees that we will be putting up, putting together and putting up throughout the city, uh, as soon as they all come in. I know Angie was sending out pictures, uh, to the group earlier today. Uh, I'm not big on group text messages, so I hardly ever respond to those. But, uh, I did see some of them, and our guys will start putting together those Christmas trees as well, and getting those put up. But they also bought a big tree from underneath the stage area, gazebo, uh, picnic shelter, whatever you may call it, across the street. So there'll be a big tree put up over there. Uh, if, we're going to be passing out papers tomorrow, uh, if you live from Joe Gillan's house where the big tree was, got hit with lightning twice towards the end of the street, Carter's Lawn Care will be removing that tree on Thursday. So he's gonna have the road blocked for a few hours over there. Also talked to him about emergency vehicles, if something would happen, he said that would be no problem, he'd be prepared to move for emergency vehicles. Uh, that thing is completely rotted out, the top of it, very dangerous for someone to climb, so he's got some type of piece of machinery that's gonna grab a hold of it, it's gonna be set up in the street for a few hours. So that is my report. Next item on the agenda is Richard Hatt.
Yes, uh, just a quick update, uh, Phase Nine A project is, is now finished construction, uh, twenty meters to the set. We know, we know, they say they would be calling it, but, uh, the last thing is just doing my paid request, or, 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 and I knew that what I made a note there was a comment made at the special meeting last week about, please mayor make a stadium or something for that, that, that was not the, the case, so, so, we, the number we gave in the speech was contract value awarded to the, to the, to the, to the.
We'll go down to new business, at the last council meeting, uh, we had talked about fences and, uh, fences with ordinance and then fences that require a survey as well. So you guys had asked Stephen to, uh, bring both of those back, and that is up for discussion at this time.
Guys, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to get this done, you all, those books, until next time, I promise I'll get them back to you.
Table, that's table, it's real bad, I'm not concerned. So we have a motion on the floor to table those two items. Is there a second? So you're making the motion, Phil?
I thought Bruce made that.
I heard someone at the table.
So Bruce made the motion, Phil, second, correct? Broke.
Phil Dowdy?
Yes.
Bruce Manns?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave White? John Norman?
The next item on the agenda is to open up bids on the fire truck.
Johnson's Fire Company. They have a bid from them.
Johnson's Fire, but there's probably.
This is from Johnson's EVS, field in Milwaukee, fire truck business. I vote for them, lots of them. That's a fire truck. Anybody else got a bid besides Johnson's?
And you're with Johnson's EVS?
Yes, sir, it's correct.
Would you like to come up to the podium, and I'm sure you'll want to go over this bid?
Here you go. Y'all can see how big it is, so we'll let the representative talk first.
So, if you guys, I'm, I'm just, here's the drawings over here in the front, I'll let you guys pass around. I have, I have a proposal, I'm already. Also, so you guys can. First, I appreciate you guys inviting us to participate in your project. As it stands, and you guys know that fire apparatus are a bit on the expensive side, and unfortunately, they're not getting any cheaper. So, we work very hard to try to stay in the budget that, you know, certain municipalities have. You know, some guys have plenty of monies, some people don't, so we, we work very hard to try to stay in those areas. Uh, the price is outright, just if you wanted to buy it, uh, no prepay options or anything like that, it would be eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And that would be, that would be delivered here to your station, uh, including everything. Uh, we do have prepay options, there is a hundred percent prepay option noted there, would bring the price to seven ninety-eight, five oh eight. And with those prepay options, we also have the ability to, to link you with the company, Consumer Leasing, uh, Products, is, is a company we've worked with for over twenty years. And they are only a company that, uh, finances to municipalities like yourself, could be garbage trucks, ambulances, police cars, anything. Uh, but, uh, that's all they do, and they can customize very well, however you guys want to do, do it, if you wanted to set up a, a prepay with those. Uh, they can delay the. They can delay the, the payments up to two years, which is basically how long it will take me to build a truck. And if you didn't want to do a full prepayment, we have custom options available. I would have to know what that number is to, to, you know, plug that in for our, our program.
So locking that in, you done the prepay, we put estimated number down, that's the down payment, and locks it in for two years.
Yep.
And then, that's approximately how long it's gonna take you to build the truck?
That's correct, yeah. So our process is very simple. Once I get a contract, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to get a contract, you guys, once you sign the contract, I put the vehicle on order, okay? So that gets the whole ball rolling on the manufacturing end. That locks that price, me, and with that said, I've got a notation in here, I, this price is only good until November twenty-first. We've already endured a price increase, November one, no, October, October one. And they were fortunate enough to me to give me, extend my time on this truck, to, to see if we could get the, you know, get this done without the price increase, which is what ultimately I try to do. So, up till November twenty-first, or say eleven fifty-nine PM on November twentieth, you know, if, if I have a contract and get the, get it locked into the, to the system, get an order in, then that price is locked, okay? You don't have to worry about anything else. And then that gives you time to get your financing. You may want to do financing locally, that's filed with us, we don't make anything off the financing end of it, that's not, that's not what I do. We just assist you with that stuff. I know that sounds kind of crazy, but it's, you know, we're just not into the finance side of it. Once you get that done, you know, you would have a good thirty days or so before we went to a pre-construction meeting. So we would do a meeting with, with chief work area and make sure that every detail is exactly the way he wants it. That's how we do it.
What kind of truck, Congress truck?
Yeah, it's a pumper tanker, it's a three thousand gallon apparatus with a fifteen hundred gallon pump. Built, in this particular apparatus, we built Brandon, South Dakota, at the Spartan University plant.
When we receive it, it's got the three thousand gallon boatable with it, everything?
Uh, you'll have to forgive me, because I did not, I, I worked on so many trucks, to be honest with you, and this truck was.
I know it's all.
It's not about dump tank?
Dump tank.
Yeah, it is on there.
Yeah.
It's on there, yeah.
We've got, and I, I did through this with Steve for, he's, I don't know, we've been going backwards for a while, right? And got it just the way he wants it, I think.
Over the last five years, just an example, so the council have a better understanding of anything with NFPA behind it, fire trucks. Last five years, how much have we gone through?
I can tell you in twenty twenty-two, our price has gone up twenty-two percent. Now, that, that's, that's a, it doesn't sound like a crazy number, but when you put twenty-two percent on a five hundred thousand dollar piece of apparatus, it, it's, it's, it is. And they're not going down. I, I, you know, I, they never, ever, I've been doing this for over ten years, they've never, ever called me and said, hey, our price is going down. So it never happened. The, the ones I did a couple of years ago, you know, I thought the prices were just crazy, you know, and we locked them in and built them, and, and those trucks are coming in. And it's like, man, you know, really, I could sell that truck for a hundred thousand dollars more than what you put for it. I mean, it's just crazy. It doesn't make my job any easier at all.
Stephen, what, what did you just talk, the ninety-three engine up there, ninety-four engine, engine one, we bought it for how much?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Fifty-eight thousand, ninety-four.
To replace that truck today?
Looking at it. Looking at it. And, and on, on, on a side note, while I'm up, that truck is also over in Willerburg having their steering box put on because they developed a class three DOT leak. So when they got looked into the leak, they found out where in the steering box, so.
So it's out of commission?
It's, it's been out, it's been out of service for two weeks now, getting the steering box put on. It's thirty-four years, thirty-five years old?
Another thing you have to consider too, that, once you do ISO grading, they won't give you any credit for anything over twenty years old. You know, you've got, you've got to look at that, I tell municipalities all the time, you know, we've got to think about that. It's, it's, it's not a fun game, it really isn't, and I understand you're paying for the prices, I really do.
And we want the option that gets eighty-five thousand dollars cheaper.
So basically what they do is, and, and like I said, we, we have the ability to set you guys up on a prepay option, get, to get that discount. Defer your payments for two years, because that's gonna take me two years to get it, okay? Or basically, so eight hundred days is what we're technically at, we're somewhere between seven hundred and twenty and eight hundred days. It's, it's currently trending down, so it's probably closer to seven hundred days. So, you know, not hardly two years. But, you know, that, that gives you, what they do is they basically, you know, if someone takes that money and puts it in a bond, and they draw interest against it, basically. And then that gives you the discount. And with that said, on January first, with interest rates, so actually, the, well, I may have provided to you guys, the interest rates are actually falling right now, so it's, it's a little bit a better time even than it was a month ago. That's something to consider.
We have ten days to lock this in.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I hate that, because it makes me, I don't want to sound like a used car salesman, but you know what I'm saying?
And on a good note, like, we talked a month or so ago, whenever Michelle was here, when we went over finances, being ladder truck, we are one year left on it. Think we can get it, some of the discount budget, next budget, we're getting it, we have it completely planned off. So, somebody will come off the books.
So how, how much was the ladder truck?
Three, three days or something. That was many years ago. Yeah. That truck, ladder truck, I need to get one more time.
Yeah.
All right, any, any more questions?
We need to discuss that.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be right over here, if you got any more questions, you can.
Stephen, would you like to talk about the ISO rating, and what happens if we go out of compliance, or unnecessarily compliance, but that changes?
Uh, yeah, the ISO, uh, right now, we, we are what they consider a class three city. Okay, class one is absolute best, class ten, you don't have a fire department. It's basically the way that scale goes. We are a three, okay? We have to have so many trucks with pump capabilities to be thirty-five hundred gallons that float ourselves. So that's why we, you know, we've got fifteen hundred in engine two, and a thousand in engine one, and twelve fifty on the ladder. So, you know, and, and engine one, like I said, if we did, going past the twenty years that ISO recognizes and all that, we're, you know, although it passed pump test and all that, when we come in and get graded again, it's probably gonna put a big hit towards us. Also too, with, with the, with the truck, with the proposed, the three thousand gallons of water on it, that will also, when ISO comes in, because we're capable of packing four thousand gallons of water out with us on initial response, that will help for what they, when they go in there and consider like emergency water supplies, because we are packing four thousand gallons of water with us, versus right now, it's like, we've got twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred with the three trucks. Ladder trucks only got three hundred in, so less than a minute in, you're gonna be empty. I mean, if you don't hit, and what we gotta look at is with that, is if, if something's going on with the water system. You know, I know a few years back, and I brought it up before, when the main water tank went down, they bring water from Kansasburg, we never had, we didn't have enough water to actually fight a big fire. So that's kind of the thought with this truck, you know, going a little bit bigger with the water, so if that happens, then we're, you know, we got a little bit play with it to get the cavalry in here. But that, that'll go for ISO, it's a new truck, it'll count for, we got twenty years on it. So, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna help us there and help us keep it where we're at, and it may be with improvement, I mean, we may get, we may get a little more than a three. But it's, it's all, it's all a points and numbers game with ISO, and you've got to score some late points, and you got to meet certain things, all the trucks have got to have all the equipment off the knee, you've got to meet that needed fire flow capability out of your own trucks, and, and so that's about it, the ISO.
And if ISO, our S, ISO number changes, just for hypothetical, if it changes from three to five?
Then the insurance rates in the city goes up for the city beat, for most part.
Is that a rating on all your equipment, or just our trucks?
Well, we got, we got, for ISO, when they come in and inspect us, we have yearly pump test on all the truck. They've had yearly ladder test for the ladder truck, yearly hose testing, yearly air pack testing, that's, you know, that's the equipment they, they look at. And then it goes in, how much, how much training, how many volunteer firemen we got, what kind of training they have, how much officer's training we have. It gets into the water system, you know, Roger pulls into this on the water side of it, dispatch pulls in on that. And, 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 and we're lucky, because on dispatch side, we get a ten out of ten every year, because dispatch is up to that area. Water, we do pretty good, because the main part is that ninety-eight percent of our district is covered with fire hydrants, unless it's not covered with fire hydrants, it is water. So I mean, it's, it's just, it's just.
You're gonna get out of the river.
Yeah, so it's, 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 you know, when it comes into the scoring, and we're, we're in that window for it to happen. I mean, we're, we're coming up on that, you know, I can get a phone call anytime, all we're gonna be in, and, and we're gonna go do an audit on you, and they're gonna check fire hydrants, they're gonna check dispatch, and they'll come in, pull records and look at the trucks and stuff, so we are getting that window.
They check personal equipment, like the uniforms you guys wear, the boots?
Turnout gear, yeah, all that stuff, everything.
I was curious about if they want that much deep to talk with you guys.
And of course, then, you know, we get it with NFPA, it's like NFPA got ten-year limits on turnout gear, they got ten-year, ten-year limit on fire hose, they got ten-year, you know, they, they put these year uses on there, so it's a, it's not a, a, a cheap business. You know, it, it's, it's not a cheap business in any way.
Save lives, save lives.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, that's a lot of the argument to have, what does, what, what, what does it cost to save a life?
Right.
You know, and, and, and the argument for years is, well, you know, you don't get them, they make costs. In, in the next ten minutes, next ten minutes, we roll out here with somebody trapped in the house. You know, we can't predict that, that's something we can't do, but unfortunately, we have to be able to be ready to do that, if it happens.
Now, I know you might have mentioned this, I just want to make sure, so if we have this truck ordered for ISO, take that into consideration?
They come, yeah, if they come into audit, say, hey, we're replacing the, you know, we're gonna, we're using this new truck that's on build, this is the specs, to replace this, you know, to replace this older end. But yeah, they, they would work with you on that. Any other questions?
The two bid prices, again, you care to go over those one more time? Steve, thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, hold on a second.
The two bid prices, the prepay and regular?
Yeah, so the regular, out the door price is eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, if you do a hundred percent prepay option, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty, that would be. If you do a hundred percent prepay. And then if you wanted to do a custom, you know, like, say, if you want to put a hundred thousand down or something like that, then I would have to get that number for you. I'd have to know what you want to do.
So that's your opening for the fire apparatus. You don't want to take any action or discuss anymore?
I'll make the motion, we buy the fire truck from Johnson, and let the mayor figure out the financing. I'll second that.
What price?
Well, you tell us when, how can we get the?
I think we need to look into the prepay, and then we'll talk with your financing people that you have available to you, and I will also talk to financing.
Sure.
Locally, and work out the details, up on passage or the motion in a second.
The prepay, are we putting in? You said put a certain number down, correct?
You could, yeah.
Yes.
You, you can, you can, you can do, I can do anything you want.
So basically, we're doing this, but what kind of number we gonna put down?
Well, we won't know, I won't know, until first talk to some of his people, financing, and then talk to local banks. And then I will sit down and crunch some numbers in the budget, and it might be, you know, fifty thousand, it might be seventy thousand, it might only be twenty-five thousand. I don't have that answer.
You sold it, you, you're so much more than a good listener, because?
Yes, because the aerial truck, ladder truck at the fire station will be paid off. So that payment will, will be on, will apply to this truck.
What is that aerial payment, thirty-four thousand, correct?
I think it's, yeah, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and some dollars, I think.
So are we just, are we just saying we gonna go ahead and do this and not know what the number is gonna be, or we gonna come out certain numbers?
Well, they have a motion on the floors that there's a prepay.
And then we have a discussion right now.
Right, have a vote?
I'm just asking, how we, how we gonna know what we gonna put down? You got to discuss it amongst them, all this stuff, just get it, one or two?
Floor's open for you guys to discuss?
I don't really think we know what we can do.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's.
Well, but what we're doing today is locking the price in.
We're gonna give them some type of number?
Well, we don't have numbers, we don't have total cost.
I mean, the lock, we don't have to pay all of it, we're just gonna lock in a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand.
Well, we have to commit to the whole amount. And then we got to figure out how we're gonna pay for it, with our own financing or theirs. So we have to go ahead and commit to the whole amount, we're not committing to a down payment, am I correct? Are you saying that?
According to what he said, we can't delay this until another council meeting, because we've got ten days to lock that price in.
The price goes up in ten days, correct?
So, special agents?
How long does it usually take to run the numbers, to be able to work with?
Um, so, I would call them in the morning, they would be available, they would, you, you would have them within an hour, probably. And like I said, I think the interest rates have gone down, so that's possible.
So we have a motion, a second on the floor, is there more discussion?
Can I hear that motion, Mr. Bush is telling them that?
It was a motion by Mark Harris, and seconded by Bruce Mann, to accept a bid from Johnson, so let the mayor work on the financing for the prepaid option.
Now, upon the acceptance of a contract or something, then do we communicate?
You're more or less accepting it now, but I would also like to add that, um, Stephen probably needs to look over, I will. I was a tease of this call, but I'm sure.
So do we also need to put a contingency in, in for Stephen, looking over this, okay?
The financing, possibly once you all meet in, through American Sun Funds and stuff. Absolutely. Be ready to have a.
Be ready to have a meeting.
Can you read that number again, so everybody knows what that number is for?
If you're buying outright, it's $883,777.
And that's cash, just if we bought it straight.
Yeah, but with that said, you wouldn't owe anything until I backed the truck back. It's, you don't owe anything upfront or anything. If we do a prepaid option, of course, I have the 100% here, it's $798,588. So, it's a savings 85. And one thing I might add too, that $798,588, that also includes a performance bond for you guys. And that's to protect your money if you do put down, you know, down payment. God forbid it were named to go to South Dakota and blows a plant away while your truck's out there being fixed, and you guys will be covered.
I don't want my insurance rates to go up, so...
So, we have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any more discussion? Yes, you don't care to have that?
And the contingency that Stephen...
Yeah, I said that after Stephen reads over the contract.
I agree, that's what everybody, clearly what to say, there's a, I'm getting kind of confused with...
The numbers?
Well, I want to go back to the floor.
And then, once I meet with either his financial people, or we do locally, I'm going to still have to come back to you guys and present all that to you guys, and get authorization and... There's going to be plenty of documents for that amount of money. Is there any more discussion? Roque?
Read that again.
Okay, it is accept the bid from Johnson, letting the mayor figure out the prepaid options for you all after Stephen reads the contracts and okay's it.
We need that number put in.
Yeah, I'm going to stick the number in, I just don't want to go back and fill in.
Just going to stick it in.
Yeah, I'm going to put the book in with the numbers, so you guys will have a copy of the actual...
I just want to make sure everybody heard, that's all.
So, there's your motion, your second, any more discussion?
It's Roque.
Roque?
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Phil Doughty?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Dave Black? If you abstain?
Abstain.
So, do you want a no vote, or I mean, like, not vote at all?
An abstained vote goes with the majority of the votes.
Yes, that's what I was saying, if you didn't want in a vote, I just wanted to make sure because somebody...
No, I'm voting no.
John Norman?
Yes.
There's two different ways to vote on that, and a lot of people get them confused, and that's why I was just making sure. If you didn't want to vote at all, then you would have to physically leave the room. Yeah, and that's why I just wanted to make a clarification to make sure what you were wanting to do.
The next item is to open bids on breathing apparatus.
Now, this is also Johnson, not this same one, correct?
Yeah, I don't do that.
Okay.
And this here, if I'm right, fire?
Yeah, come on up to the podium, say, I'm ready.
This bid here, we've got the NFPA grant money, the air packs is business, we're grant money.
We've just got one bid, and we think they got a bid besides Johnson's speak up now. The charge is $196,090.
So, that got covered, I think.
And we still have some left over from that.
We still have some left over from that.
We got leftover bottles.
That bid is only good until 11:14, 25.
Not the bucket, SDBA.
Did you hear that, Steve? That bid's only good until 11:14. So, we have a motion on the floor to accept the bid from Johnson's Fire Equipment Company for $196,009. We already have a motion.
Yeah, it's covered.
Does that have to be seen, or you call them or certified, or how you go, we just got three days?
I'll just, I'll call the sales agent and say that you all accepted that, and then, he'll go ahead and...
Well, I said mail might be late, so...
Yeah, no, I'll do that by phone. And that way, he can get it in before the deadline.
I may interject, I do obviously know the salesmen. They probably have a price protection on that also.
They do. Yeah, because with that, what it is, is with this bid, if you look at it, all the spare bottles are free, and that's what we're going to lose on the 14th, is after the 14th, we won't get the free bottles. And with 20 packs, we're looking at almost an extra $20,000 on this. So, that's where the expiration's for the free bottles versus having to pay almost a thousand pieces for them.
How old is the bottle last, Steve?
Those are 15 years, bodily bottles mandated by NFPA, after 15 years, we've got to get rid of them. That's what we got, we got a bunch of bottles sitting at station now that we got from the, what, 2006? From the 2006 crank that they got, they're out of date. And we got some, we bought some, we bought about 20 new bottles, probably about three, four years ago. And the good thing is, those bottles are adaptable to these new packs. So, we'll have 20 bottles plus extra 20, we'll end up with 60. And they'll go out of date, you know, of course, the first 20 will outdate, another 20 will be good for 15 years.
And that also goes through the ISO rating too?
Yeah, it's all part of it, yeah. It all ties into it.
Insurance rating.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the breathing apparatus. Is there any more discussion? Roque?
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil Doughty?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Black?
I do apologize, because I completely got it, I must say.
We had that one more thing, I thought.
Yeah, I'm going back to them, I'm just going to go to these...
Sure. Basically with the creek and the bridges.
And we are still waiting on the, shoot, I've lost the name of it. Anyway, about getting the creek cleaned up, we're still in that process. Were they committed to cleaning up half the creek? We're still waiting on that paperwork. So, once that paperwork is submitted to us, and we get started on that, and then, that's when we're going to advocate for cleaning up the other part. So, we're still waiting on that. Mr. Jeff Elsberg?
I can just speak from here.
Sure.
Last week, you all were discussing the contract on the water, running the water company and so forth and so on. And it seemed to me, and I went, I've had some material I got from some people and looked it over, but it seems like the wrong question was being asked. The question that was being asked and answered had to do with, should it be bid out? Maybe it should, maybe it shouldn't. That kind of was left in a question. But I think the wrong question was being asked in that the real question is, is it legal for any mayor or any councilman, councilwoman, to be given a job with the city? Is that legal? And I will, and I will have it in your mind, but I don't know that I'm, I'm not here to debate it. I just want to ask the question and let you all do it between and among yourselves. But what if, in this case, it had been one of the councilmen that asked for that job? Would it have been any different in what you did? Has anybody thought of it that way? I think you would tend to look at it a little differently. But the law doesn't show any difference, the stuff that I have read. So, I don't care who gets it done, don't even know if you need somebody. It could be any of you, it could be Mark, it could be David, John, Bruce, Phil, Jamie, don't care. But I think that question has to be decided, except I don't want to just hear from the attorney tonight that it's not. I think that needs discussion and needs to be figured out. And I know that is the question, not whether or not it needs to be bid out. Is that easy? Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the one-time pay raise. And what this is, is the one-time pay raise for city employees on Christmas.
I didn't pay last year.
Last year, you done $800 for full-time, $600 for part-time.
I just, you know, just want to make sure we're capable of at least doing the same amount.
Excellent. We have a motion for $800 for full-time, $600 for part-time, would you say? Is there any discussion?
Except for that, full-time and part-time, because of the amount of hours that were ordered?
I think it's just been separated, and this is just my opinion, just because full-time versus part-time. And number of hours for...
I don't want to get, you know, public concernation with their employees, but they got, I didn't get there, I assume, you know what I'm saying?
Are part-timers, how many hours do they use?
Most of the time, they work 40 hours, and then, like, every two weeks, they'll come back to 31 hours. And if gone, they go work 40 hours. And some weeks, they even have overtime, depending on if we have made line water leaks that require a fly, or certified to go out and fly, I think class every year, go out and fly. Some weeks, they are, some weeks, they aren't.
Do you think between overtime and everything, they can put out just about 40 hours a week?
I would say over the course of a year, you're close.
Because I know, as a full-timer, no, our part-timers don't make as much as full-timers. And I know that $800 to them would be more, because they're not making as much.
Do our part-timers get that a bit?
No. So, I would go with $800 for Jamie, just because...
Let's ask John if that's all right with him. So, John, Bruce wants to change his to $800, his motion to $800 across the board. Do you second that that motion, or are you in agreement with that?
Based on your affiliation and communication with the workers, how do you feel about that?
I'm 100% okay with it.
It's also worth it, I am too.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor for $800 across the board, one-time pay raise for city employees. Is there any more discussion?
I don't know how this goes, we got this, now we can get that, and that's just what, the workforce, keep everybody...
I just know that in their circumstances, if they're being paid...
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any more discussion? Roque?
Bruce Vance?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Phil Doughty?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Black?
So, one item that was not on the agenda, the cornerstone, which is our lobbyist who we're meeting with tomorrow, to meet in Frankfurt with, I will be down there all day tomorrow. As we talked in the past, their contract is up, and I have the renewal agreement here for 12 more months. And we had talked in the past about this being the year for the state's budget. Obviously, that's why we're going there tomorrow, we'll probably have more visits right after the holidays. If their contract is up, and I can hand-deliver this tomorrow, if it's passed, I will be with her in Frankfurt tomorrow, making some visits, so, just totally up to you guys.
Is that the same rate?
The same rate, same rate.
Everything?
Yeah.
Plus, everybody know what we're talking about here, I really did know what we're talking about.
So, a year ago, the city opted to hire a lobbying firm, they settled on cornerstone. And they have been lobbying for us for 12 months, as of now, and their contract is up.
That was on one of the other councils?
Correct, it's a year.
Since you've been down there so long, have you feel the effectiveness of the past 12 months of bidding? Have you been, money well spent?
We shall see in the upcoming budget. I think we've got our foot in the door in some places. Tomorrow, we're meeting with Representative Williams, Representative Ruby, which is the... Tomorrow, we're meeting with Representative Williams, Representative Ruby, which is the, um, what would I call, what would you call him, Richard? He's the.
Appropriations.
Appropriations Chair for the Budget Committee. We're meeting with him, uh, tomorrow, so, and these are contacts that she's got in touch with. So it being the the budget year for Frankfurt, I think it's money well spent. I can't guarantee you, nor can she, that anything's gonna come to this. But it's nice to have somebody in your in your in your corner with the contacts and the information and calling them constantly, emailing them constantly, setting up meetings for us. I think we should renew it for at least another year. Tomorrow, we're going to concentrate on, um, the intake project. And, um, hopefully we can get some money, either a line item or something, put in the budget for the intake project. That's what we're gonna be pushing for tomorrow.
When should you say it was the cost of that?
It is for twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Yes.
I'll make that motion, re-renew that contract, uh, for twelve months with the lobbyist.
I do have a question, have they increased any extra fees or anything?
That I'm aware of, they have not turned in any.
Okay, cause I know we've discussed that.
Yes, they have turned in any additional cost. Uh, we talk, uh, her and I and Richard, uh, we're on Zoom at least once a month. We're on phone calls, maybe once a week, maybe twice a week. No, she does not supply or.
Now she wants out, there's a loophole at Frankfurt, so she's.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to extend the contract for cornerstone government affairs for one year. And I will say that in the contract does state one year.
I know previously we discussed that it was one of those that if we're unsatisfied is.
Correct.
We can terminate paying, so at least until the budget comes out.
It will take dividends before you want to get something.
Hang on just a second.
Cause if we see it in the budget, it pays for itself, but. But if there's nothing for us at the budget.
I'd have to read the whole contract again to be able to tell you for sure if accepting this will. Would still like to end. But if you all want to accept it, assuming that it ends on a monthly basis, and if it doesn't, mayor will sign it, is all we're checking. Not assuming that's what you. To assume that it can end at any given.
Cause I thought.
We discussed that, but I don't know.
Cause I thought it was in our first one.
It's just accepted with the understanding that it is and it's not.
So I'm in motion.
Um, Mark.
Mark, are you in agreement that your motion will, um, have the wording that if it's not, um, if the city cannot end it on a monthly basis, that I will not sign it, but if it does say in the, um, contract that it can be terminated, are you in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Someone second? Bruce, are you in agreement with that? So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Roque.
Mark Harris.
Yes.
Bruce Vance.
Yes.
Phil Doughty.
No.
Jamie Gillum.
Yes, continue on.
Dave White. John Norman.
Yes.
Motion carried. That's all that's on the agenda. We have adjourned it, hang on just a second, if you want to leave, just exit quietly, please. I'll turn it over to Stephen on that.
Dave, my recollection on that, obviously a little important, that starts with six. We'll talk about it as long as you want, I'll be totally speaking next time.
That's when somebody's asking me what they can do. And I told him I'd find myself tonight, so I just wanted to ask that question, what?
I'll let you know or earlier than next meeting, so you can tell them, okay, yeah, yeah. I'll make sure to call you and tell you. Yeah, or or I'll send you a letter about it.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Has there been any progress on that one property that's down here across from.
I've seen her four or five times. She's making.
What about the Wilson drive that was in discussion about, and she's, we all know that it did own that.
You're talking about that whole building. The thing she knows she owns, big lot sale.
I thought she owned a little building. Yeah, it's more simple than there's anybody.
We we brought up that property down here and you you have a claim on the little.
Building out behind it, right?
Yes.
Behind it or to the side of it?
Side of it, side of it.
What do you mean? Well, there's a.
It's beside.
Yeah, beside it.
Facing, uh, what's that?
Yeah, there's an old wooden building there beside that.
City has a roof.
Yeah, I know, I drove by, I drove by two days ago.
How wide is that roof?
Another woods one.
Yeah. Maybe the city ought to clean up some of their property damage so people can get to there.
Is it an alley or a road?
Alley, I think.
Probably ten foot.
That's what I say.
Yeah, most of them in town, ten foot.
Yeah, those, I think the streets that you were planning, roof needs cleaned up, maybe grown to the city.
Yeah, we can check in there.
I just wanna make sure, cause I.
We were talking about.
Well, the one behind that, what's his name, that was across the street, black, says he owns. That's what he told. I think where that white house is and that lot beside it, he says he owns that all week, that's pretty. I don't know, but somebody owns.
Most of our standard living for the.
Well, I'd say his lease goes to that alley.
So like I said.
What is that tree? You know that tree?
No.
The alley.
No, we're, I just asked if they had that cleaned up some more.
Yeah, I've been working on that over there. We're working on the building, so.
I just thought we talked about that like last month, so I just wanna make sure there's there was some progress.
So basically, how do we know who owns what down there? How how the people gonna know who owns what if there's nothing ever checked?
Who is it? Bruce knows leave. Yeah, I believe. We'll figure out where the alley is and see.
You probably know what butcher.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Mark.
Have a motion, give her a second. All the way for say.